We call to the coordinator of this session. School community budget planning. And. I'm present, two member of the child's.
Present.
Present.
So we have three things on our agenda today. Taking care of some minutes. We are going to take a look at the annual budget development calendar and see about revising anything that is revising. And we'll need to come back to that with updated dates for the upcoming year and then talking about rubrics for budget development, budget document improvement. So before we do any of that, we have a public comment. I don't see anyone. Anyone would like to make a public comment? All right, moving on. So we have minutes from our three previous meetings for approval. So I would take a motion to approve minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from the December 9th, 24 meeting, the January 8th, 25 meeting, and the February 3rd, 25 meeting. So.
Any comments, discussion, anything? Okay, so I will call that to a vote. I. I don't think we need to do roll call because none of us are on Zoom. Okay, thank you. So all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All right, moving on. I do too. So I put in the materials a copy of past year's budget development calendar. Hopefully everyone has had a chance to look it over and I want to just discuss it because we'll need to create an updated one to bring to the full committee for our September meeting. And I just wanted to give somebody time to leave any potential revisions and things like that to it. So I will just open the floor for discussion about that. So it's helpful, but I can just kind of go over some.
Three things, I guess.
Several of them. Couple days ago.
Okay, so the first page just starts with some colorful pictures of our students because we want to send them in all discussions about the budget. And superintendent, it would be great if we could have some updated pictures that are approved for public use for this year's calendar.
How do we do that?
There are certainly pictures out and about online, but we want to make sure that we're using pictures that we actually have permission to use. So that would be very helpful. And then on the second page is a year overview calendar that just has dates highlighted in different colors to correspond with the different kind of entities that touch the budget development. So orange is for actions by the school committee, blue is administration, school administration, yellow is from the city, and purple is from the state. And then that's laid out by months going from, it went from September to this coming August and kind of overlapping into the next fiscal years, just to give a picture of how this rolls over. So going to details about that because you already read it. And then the last page is some FAQ. And the first part is about what the school committee's budget planning policy is. So there's a copy of that up here. And then answers to questions about how people can have input into the budget development process at the various stages. And it includes links here and not just for the school committee, but also for folks to contact folks at the state level who have an impact in the city level. So that's that. That's kind of the super brief nutshell.
So. Just go. This is a working session. I was suggesting so. No one on?
Yeah.
So anywhere in this process, I guess, because I was looking for it, is a conversation about what the actual numbers will look like? Is there a time that we can do that? You had put a folder in with our materials about, like, well, there was Wellesley, all the different budgets that were out there. And I spent a lot of time looking at all of the different formats. And then I went to look at some of smaller districts because we are a small district. And like, so my printer was kind of giving me a hard time. So I looked at Long Meadows because it really spoke to me as not only an educator, but a taxpayer, that it was very simple and very easy to understand. And I think one of the concerns is transparency around the budget. And so we want to present something that is easy. And it tells the story of what's in each school. So where in this calendar are, can we do that or can we do that now?
So part of what you're saying is the next item, which would be the rubrics for the annual budget document.
Okay.
But as far as, you know, the way it plugs into the calendar, I do see what you're saying about a time when the subcommittee discusses the actual numbers before they reach the other committees.
Well, it's not even the numbers, but the format of the numbers because it's the format that is confusing.
Yeah.
Or was confusing even for me. Like, let me just give you an example. So, and I know it's being done because of the state. So this isn't that. This is about, you do something for the state, but we also need to do something for our taxpayers. So like the, they call it, in one meta, they call it the control masters, what we do, this is what we do. But underneath this for the taxpayers, it shows really nicely, like one page, all the budget.
That's the budget document.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I think that is a great topic to bring up while we're talking about how to revise the annual budget document. Because that's, that's what's here in February, when the superintendent's proposed budget is published. And then we have our annual budget hearing. And that document is what's presented to the public. And also that's, once the committee approves it, then that proposed budget goes off to the mayor's. So, so I think that is the substance of item, the next item on our agenda. So this item is just about the annual calendar for budget development. So what we have here are a couple of different things that are accounted for in the budget development calendar. Mostly it's about the operating budget. There's a little bit about capital. So you can see here in September, the city finance director releases forms in a calendar to departments for capital improvement. We, in October, as a committee, will confirm capital improvement requests. So anytime you see CIP, it gets mentioned once more in here, March. When the capital improvement plan is due from the mayor to the city council. Where capital is mentioned, but most of this is about operating. And. There are just like two things that I think I'd like to see on the calendar that aren't here yet. One of them would be pre-publishing the budget, I think linking up with the city ways and means just so that they know what's coming and we have heads up if there are disasters that we're financially heading towards. I'd like to get linking up with them a little bit more codified. And then the other thing, and this was something that occurred to me, so if it's something that no one does anywhere and is a terrible idea, shoot it down, I won't be offended. We never really do like a post-mortem after action report of the previous budget to see how close we were to hitting it. And I think having that information would be valuable when building a new budget. If that makes sense. And it would also be helpful for answering questions from just general greenfield public who want to know what's going on with this item, that item.
Are you talking the historical trends? Because if the line items do show four years plus of historical.
Yes, I'm talking less historical than that, more of just the previous year in the greater detail. Because I think it would be helpful for us to be able to have a clear, concise focus narrative because I know that the spreadsheets, they have all of the information on them. But a lot of people will pick up the spreadsheet, get completely overwhelmed, and then come to us with the questions. So. Let's do that one, talk about that first, and then the pre-publishing that you mentioned. So what you're suggesting is like, I like the phrase that you used, focused narrative. So like a specific narrative document that we would be asking a business manager to produce that explains how closely the previous year's budget worked out as planned? Yes, it could just be focusing on where we were above and where we were below. Something that is coming to mind, Andy got so many emails from me about transportation, looking this year, that year, why these numbers were so different. And there were the easy answers, but I think it might be good to have a unified meeting. So we've got this unified set of minutes or people have questions, they know this is when they'll get their answers. So that it's not just a scattershot of emails as the subject occurs, if that makes sense. But if you think it's more work and not work.
That's good. It's good. The school committee.
Yeah, so I think what you're asking for is a line that usually would be that Andy would have your history there of the last four and then budget to actual. And that's maybe that's what you're asking, I'm not sure.
Well, but with the explanations behind, so it's not just, here's what we budgeted, here's what we spent, and here is why. The in here is why column is the question that I get asked the most.
So right now, this last set of marks, so every, every school spent six times the amount that was budgeted or six or four times the amount is supply money, except for Newton, which spent under what was budgeted supply money. And I want to know why, as a, as a taxpayer and as somebody who is on the school committee. But there's also another issue. School committee has budget fiscal policies. And one of the policies is that the end of the school year, financially, if there is remaining money in the school budget, it is supposed to be returned to the city. Every department in Greenfield, it's in our policy. We have not done that. So it's a bone of contention with the city and it's something we need to be open about. I mean, if we need that money for some purpose and, and good reasoning has been given, but then if you're holding on to that money and then the city says, we can't come up with this amount of money, we look bad because that money is still in our budget. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we're looking back.
So you don't keep rainy day accounts?
There's a lot of rainy day accounts.
Well, you just said you don't though.
We're not supposed to.
Okay.
By our, our policy. We have a budget policy, I think it's DBF, that basically says, if we have remaining money at the end of the year, we're supposed to turn it back to the city. And that policy has not been followed.
So wait, go ahead.
I'm not opposed to talking about that, but I feel like it's getting a little bit beyond the scope of budget development. Like that's a bigger issue that I think is a full committee issue.
Okay.
For discussion. And I want, my main objective right now is to put, decide what, if any revisions should be made just to the calendar. And then we will come back in a month and make sure that it is all good, all set to bring forward to the committee just to improve the calendar in September. Does that make sense? So. So. I, so Anne, are you suggesting that we have a specific budget and finance meeting as, as a post-mortem? Or are, would you think that should be more of a full committee, an agenda item? I think I would say a subcommittee item, just in the interest of time and not getting bogged down with other things. So we could potentially add a date where there's expected to be, we can add that to July 26.
Okay.
Since there's already a TBD budget and finance meeting with this on it, just redeveloping the annual budget development account. So that could be an expected agenda item for budget and finance in July.
The, the challenge being that we have summer P's, have summer conferences that will end up, you know, we have that post-mortem in July.
Maybe too soon.
Maybe too soon, like so August, late August.
So the August one would be better. Apple Larry's. Yeah, because this is a public focused document for the public, I've been trying to think, okay, what are the questions I get asked the most? And are they relevant to this? Because the other thing that I get asked about, I'm sure everyone has been, is about warrants. But I don't know how warrants would fit in the scope of the annual budget development.
Well, Stacy had a good point. She said that Monique has like a subcommittee that just deals with warrants. I don't know if like a subcommittee from a subcommittee, like that people go through the warrants. So maybe we need to look at what other school committees are doing around warrants. So yes.
Energy saving. We did do that. We had a discussion about warrants that last year. I have a whole folder in here that I can share with you. Yes, December 9th meeting. That's what have a summary of it. Yeah. So we did examine, there are all whole bunch of different ways that different committees handle warrants. And so I did a whole bunch of research, looking at how other committees do things and sort of looking at what the prevailing approach is and things like that. And we, the committee did decide to continue approving warrants the way that we're currently doing it. So it's not so much the approval of warrants that I'm talking about is people get all sorts of ideas about what's in the warrants and what isn't in the warrants. And so I've had people who have watched the full committee meeting and they'll just hear warrants mentioned. And it's sort of hard to answer those questions for people who don't have the folder of warrants right in front of them. So I'm trying to think of a way to make the warrant information accessible and transparent to the general public. If that makes sense. But I mean, Andy's great with responding to our individual questions.
I just, I understand everything, but I'm just wondering, that's more operational than this is budget development?
Yeah. Yeah, just. I was thinking in terms of public facing element of it, but yeah, I guess it is too far of a stretch. I'm not sure how that would get worked into the budget development calendar. I mean, the, this calendar is about the development of the annual operating budget and just documenting when we approve capital for us. So, yeah, warrants, I think, should be discussed as a separate issue.
It's a good calendar.
Calendar. Hold up and then I lost.
What we can do for the next meeting is these days are, if I was kind of overlaid on just this year's dates, right?
Yeah, we have not plugged in any new dates for the upcoming year. So. Well, I mean, we generally held to this calendar pretty well this past year, so I'd say it works. So in September, we anticipate that the school committee will approve the new annual budget calendar, have a discussion about. So last year, we had a discussion about community budget planning involvement. And the subcommittee worked out its, its own approach to doing that, which was to conduct outreach to PTOs, the GHS School Council, and the CPAC and the LPAC. Which I don't think we need to decide right now, but I think we should plan to have a discussion about that in September, which means it would be great if the subcommittee could have its suggestion for that before then. So we can pin that for our next meeting. And the idea behind that is to align with our, our budget development policy, which is it's, that's advised that we have that kind of community engagement. So there's that. And in September, the committee would also discuss and just, our improvement requests. So the committee would receive information from the superintendent at that point in time about what is probable. That will street elevator, the. Whatever. Which is that kind of project. Whatever's upcoming because then those, the committee needs to come back to it and approve the capital improvement request in October. So we would have that discussion in September.
But if it's an emergency, a phone call to the mayor and it goes, she'll take it and she'll do capital planning right away, like a fire panel, we're not playing. Elevators, we're not playing. But our elevators always break, it does too.
So I'm thinking, last year, we had budget and finance discuss the development of our budget policy implementation. I'm talking about that outreach there.
Yeah.
In September, after the September school committee meeting, but I'm kind of thinking maybe we should do that in August instead. And that might consolidate meetings. Well, my only thought there, thinking about the way that it plays out, because the way that we did it last year, we reached out to the PTO presidents to get on their meeting agendas. Is that August might be too early for that because of the PTOs.
They won't have their first meeting until September.
That's true. But I suppose in August, we could plan, okay, what do we want to try to do there?
So in August, we could actually communicate with principals to get it in their newsletters.
True.
That in September, their September meeting or something like that. If you want to advertise it earlier, I think that's a good thing.
Well, the thing is, we can't say we'll be there for their September meetings because they said their September meetings, not us.
Right, or when can we come, just what maybe you ask.
I think it's more to consolidate meetings in August. We'll decide, okay, I will be the one emailing this, this, and this PTO to ask, you know, September, October, November, which meeting we've slot into best and. Yeah, I think November is like the ideal time. Because that's when department heads are putting together what their request will be to the executive leadership team. And I think that's the ideal time for them to be hearing from their parents and.
There's a group though that we didn't hear from, that in the history of Greenfield always was heard from. And I know Superintendent Patton said, in her history, no, but before her history, we, the school committee, used to meet with principals. Each principal used to come into a room with school committee members and say, this is what I need. This is what I would really want. Like if, if I wanted a, a second guidance counselor, but I knew we couldn't afford it. All of that was presented to the school committee members making the budget so that they knew upfront where principals, you know, this is what we're being told, this is our bottom line, this is our basic. But they also got to hear the other pieces. So they actually knew, like, give you an example, like, so if a position was cut at Newton because another school needed something that was more critical, so that they knew, those committee members knew about those swaps that were happening. I mean, Amy Peretti sat through those meetings, so. Me, she's the last one I could think of, I was like, sat with.
So what you're asking for somewhere on here is a subcommittee or a full committee meets with principals?
No, subcommittee.
So sub, like, meeting.
One or two, that was one or two school committee members, it wasn't the whole.
Just looking at how that relates to the calendar. Around December, the executive leadership team discusses budget requests with department heads. So we know it's not going to change consistently. So in other words, it's there, it's just not our committee, it's a different subcommittee that's meeting with them. Well, it's not a subcommittee, the executive leadership team is the superintendent, the assistant superintendent.
And I understand what Mel's saying, but I've never seen principals. My recent time go to the school committee, I don't want to say that it's a waste of your time, I'm not trying to imply that. But that's operational, if any, that's what he says. And, and as we collectively come forward with a budget to you, right? If we're short or something like that and the district believes, hey, we really need that counselor, but we can't afford it, then we may ask you for that. But I can see the principal went to you.
They presented.
Or presented, you know what I'm saying, presented to you, almost kind of like saying, well, I don't agree with what the superintendent's presenting, so I'm pitching my own thing right now.
No, it wasn't like that.
Okay, that's what.
I know, I know exactly what you're saying, but it wasn't like that. It was a case of, it was a sense that, no, because we would have never done that. But it was more of a case of the committee would get one number and needed the details of why this was being asked for. The superintendent maybe had some of the information, but the information was more real coming from a principal. Like I need a bus monitor because I have this happening. So it was more those kind of conversations. It was not trying to push for something that.
For their individual school, yeah. I'm thinking district by, right, when we present to you.
Exactly.
We're taking into account everybody's needs. Yes, somebody may feel sad that they're losing like. Teacher, counselor, bus monitor.
Right.
But overall, we get to do what's right, the district, so we present that final one. If they're advocating for each other at that, after that point, now we're going back.
This is, this is touching on a more like existential question about the role of school committees. So, and it's one of the trickiest sort of things to figure out, I think, on the ground when school committees are doing their thing. Because the committee is not supposed to be involved in day-to-day operations. The committee is supposed to be operating at a level of governance, that's the bird's eye view. And if the, if committee, the committee is getting involved in the school administration's deliberations with their principals, their department heads, things like that, that's, it's definitely operational, I think, as opposed to governance. So, I mean, a member could float to the whole committee suggestion about by requesting agenda item through the chair about whether, you know, for example, a committee member or subcommittee member should be appointed to attend the executive leadership team meetings with department heads and things like that. But I don't think, I don't know that we could do that here. I don't think, I don't know that we could do that here.
We have in the past, though, I can think of one instance in particular where. Doctor DeBarge presented a budget that ultimately the budget finance subcommittee voted, it was the. Elementary school music position that they directed. Administration to put in that music position, so there is. That give and take, I think I would, you know, along with like the role of saying is like. You know, and it's, I want to say, in that sense, it worked as far as I'm going on my strict. Interpretation of, you know, the programs, that base management of building administrator brings their budget to the superintendent, superintendent reviews, has the discussion. As we have, then we bring it forward to the subcommittee, subcommittee has the discussion and the subcommittee brings it forward to the full committee. And we have in the past that the subcommittee, you know, I think of that in particular, where subcommittee directed the superintendent. We'd like you, you know, we are telling you since to end that elementary school music position. And we actually had one discussion one time about not being able to do strings for kids, and then it was ultimately told to. Reinstate the budget for the strings for kids, so. You know, I think I say process works. I think if anything, hearing what it is that the subcommittee is talking about is that just ensuring that. Whenever there is a discussion at the administrative executive team level that remember Goodwin was saying. That if I chanted, you know, so we're not going to have a fourth grade teacher. That that is brought forward so that the committee is made aware that this was a decision that was made, so that there is a. Reduction of the fourth grade teacher because that position's being traded a lot forward to something else.
It's the communication amount that's really important.
It's a small town, so.
So I guess what I'm saying is I think we can get to.
To where I'm going, yes, I agree.
And I would agree, if we were going to cut anything, I think. We would see it, I would assume that it would come to you. We just presented when I just came from Munson, we had many cuts, yeah. Similarly, what you mentioned, they mentioned, no, we really want to keep the arts and music program, right? So that's a priority, right, so you send that to, I hear that, I get it, okay, that's a priority, yeah. Okay, we can see what we can do around that, right, and then we present to you, we collapse some classes there. We just laid out, here's what we saved, right, we cut a teacher, and when I say cut someone, was it with. Retirements, things like that, but you know what I mean, right, the teachers, okay, this, we save. Sixty five thousand dollars here, or like this, you know, that type of stuff, so you'll, you'll get that, I would assume. I can say that politely to you that that would be basic, if we were committing cuts.
The school committee did create a way of approaching this from a governance standpoint. Last year by establishing. Committee approved budget priorities in a one page document that for the superintendent to then use. In hashing out those finite details and that's. In here, so in December, at the December school committee meeting, the full committee would be discussing budget priorities. The subcommittee would be providing information to the full committee based on our outreach. Efforts and what we've heard from people, and of course, the committee hears directly from constituents as well. And, and. Okay, I was just checking to see if we had a second date for that, it's just that one, so in December, the committee. Would discuss and approve budget priorities to directly superintendent to. Structure the budget in certain, in certain ways, but I don't know if that's, is that. Specific enough. To address what you're saying.
I think. When, I just think there's so, been so many. Things that have come up. That. We didn't know about, and that's, that's, the, the key is good communication. Not to be hit on the street by some parent who says there's twenty six kids in a kindergarten class. I mean, not to know what is going on so that we can. Talk to that and support what's going on, instead of saying, you know, just call the superintendent. I mean, which is what we all have done. So I think trying to effectively know. When staffing, because staffing is hard in Greenfield, we're always looking for people, we never have enough people, it's hard. And so our, our parents get stuck. Trying to deal with something and they don't know who to talk to, and they usually do come to school committee members and. We're directed not to have a conversation and tell them to talk to the superintendent, but that makes those people mad. Because they're, you know, getting too information. You know, just to even know that they're, they're working on it, you know, is sort of a good thing to say. And I was always like texting Karen, you know, this is happening or whatever. I think staffing is hard. And especially when you have to hire nineteen people in the summer and you can't find nineteen people in the summer. We even had open positions all year long. And so I think the communication around that is, is big. And I don't know if that should just become a agenda item maybe on the subcommittee. Staffing updates for budget and finance, because. I mean, that really does impact our budget.
I think that might be a full committee monthly rather than subcommittee of. Which is the part of superintendent's report.
It's like, where are we, like, I recruited a math teacher yesterday in ninety nine restaurant. I am always trying to recruit, he told me he was a math teacher for his masters and he said he didn't think about teaching. I was probably in the restaurant doing that, so.
I'm wondering, so we have this TBD budget and finance meeting that's in here in January. And it has two main purposes, one is to receive an update about the budget development from the superintendent. Okay. So I'm wondering if we can work your suggestion into that agenda item where. The superintendent provides. More of a. Detailed breakdown of the requests that you received and how those, how you've worked those out. With your principals and department heads, I mean, we have heard. Those kind of details before, but if it were more codified in the agenda, then maybe that would help.
If that's.
Because then, then we'd be getting. We would be getting our community input based on this subcommittee's outreach. And we would be also getting information from staff while still sticking to. The committee policy, which is that staff do not communicate directly with the school committee, they communicate through the superintendent. So we can ask the superintendent to provide a more detailed breakdown of what staff are asking for. At that January, yeah, at the January meeting, and it would be the end of January because the. Second item there is. A discussion of the governor's budget, which doesn't get released until. Okay, let me just get that.
So to recap the things that we're suggesting. We're suggesting moving the, developing the implementation of the. Community budget planning involvement from September to August. August also doing a little bit of the after action for why there were places with the previous year's budget, where they were lower or higher. And also codifying as agenda item for the January budget and finance meeting, having the superintendent give a. An update from what the building heads from that meeting in December were asking for. Are those the changes that we have proposed so far? Okay, listening?
It's perfect.
Okay, okay. So are we talking this August as well, like, will we?
Yes, we'll do that, I mean, if everybody agrees, we'll do that this year, even though it's not on the calendar. But then it will be on the calendar for the following year, so that these things are being built in as like annual recurring. We're refining the subcommittee's approach, you know, as we go on.
Andy, is that something that's possible to do by August?
As far as the.
Looking at the budget, like in.
She's talking about the postmortem.
Yeah, the postmortem.
It'd be late August, you know, because the last of the payrolls. I mean, we have the.
Okay.
It's just a matter of sometimes the things that flush out, both salary and non operating. You know, we might end up doing an encumbrance for ten thousand dollars pending that came in at nine grand, so.
Okay.
Was that flushing it out, I mean.
Is that too tight of a timeline, because really, I just think we need to, I'm just trying to make sure we do our meeting and have this. Our final file for post calendar ready to go sometime before the September school committee. And in time for it to be included in the material. We could put that.
I guess as far as I'm sort of seeing this postmortem somewhat, I don't think that should hold up the budget calendar. I think that a postmortem is informational so that you can show you things, I mean, there's a lot of things where. You know, I do it as a matter of routine anyways, where I'm running and looking at something and just like never doing the same. And I've looked at back historically, the vacancy savings that this district has had based on. The, in addition to the not being able to find people, but the number of comings and goings that have occurred during. Has been, I mean, it's been bad since post COVID for everywhere, but for some reason, it seems to be. Much more active here, where I think last year, the last time I, when I checked, it was like, there was. Three hundred thousand dollars in vacancy savings in FY twenty four. I mean, that's, that's a lot, you know, and then FY twenty five, when I checked it, you know, I want to say it was April. We were at five hundred thousand dollars in vacancy savings, and so that's, that's a huge problem that, you know.
So do you see that in the other districts?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Not to the level, but absolutely, it's a thing where, and again, that's why. School committees administrations are offered that flexibility to. You know, do with those vacancy savings, use, I mean, one of the examples, we had a vacancy savings because we couldn't find. Whether it's a OTPT speech, you know, psychologist, so then Mr. Wessing ends up contracting out. So, so we'll end up showing, we'll show the vacancy savings in that line, but that his contracted service line might be over, but. You know, that's the trade.
Vacancy savings in some lines, right?
So long answer, I mean, it might be, I think it's doable, whether or not it'll be tied up neatly as far as the, you know, finishing up on FY twenty five. You know, maybe September would be, you know, even early September. It's more just, I want to say, give the time because we have to do our final reconciliation with the town so that I can start to port it to state. But I don't think that that should hold up the budget calendar discussion.
I just don't have to.
I mean, unless, if we do it in August, I just want to say, I would not want it, you know. I would say it's going to be a little close enough for government. Kind of things because of the fact that, you know, we'll have, there's a possibility depending on this meeting. It's hell that there will still be accrued payroll that hasn't necessarily charged it because the last of the summer pays. The last week in August.
So August would be a broad strokes overview as opposed to the finite, it is over, this is concrete.
Okay, all right, well, you know what, if something gets bumped from one, one, you know, box to the next on here in practice. I think that's okay, because the goal of this calendar is to like give people an idea of housing's layout, you know, so it doesn't need to be. A hundred percent. Okay. All right, so October, the committee is approving capital improvement, like I said. Receiving an update on enrollment. Asking the full committee to approve. Our final plan for outreach.
But if we're talking about our plan in August, then we can ask them to prove in September, and that way. If one of the PTOs can't do November, but has an early October PTO meeting, it would work. So I would say bump the approved deviant implementation to September. Since we're kicking the development to August.
Yes, that makes sense, and I, that's great that we can move it up, I think it was just like. Slightly delayed last year because this was all inventing the wheel, you know. Okay, November. Is when we were aiming to do all that outreach last year, and, and so that's what's on here for the actions. At that point in time, the superintendent is calling for requests from department heads. Okay, and then December, the committee decides and approves budget priorities. Whilst the executive leadership team is discussing budget requests with their department heads. We already said we're going to include a specific, more specific breakdown of that in the superintendent's update to this. Subcommittee in January. For the budget development update, we're going to talk about the governor's budget in this subcommittee at that time, and then. February, the committee receives the superintendent's presentation of the proposed budget, which we are going to talk about next. I think we need to revise that slightly there in February. I think we actually need to put this item, the discussion of any feedback about the FY twenty seven now. Budget development within the subcommittee up to the January meeting.
So it's the discussion of feedback on the budget proposal, so would that mean we would receive the budget proposal in January also?
No, I. We can't ask the superintendent to essentially publish the budget before the budget gets published. That, what we can do is ask the superintendent to provide. What they're anticipating. In the budget and make suggestions. That being said, this subcommittee can make suggestions, but we can't make decisions with the full committee, you know, so it's. Advisory capacity, and then the full committee needs to make decisions about what to approve or not approve.
I guess it's that's written, it's discussion of feedback on the budget proposal, doesn't say who the feedback is from. But because it follows the item about the school committee receiving the presentation of the proposed budget. And just with the passive voice there, it's tripping me up, so.
I know.
When I read, when I read that, it was bringing the feedback from all those committees to that meeting, the PTOs and. I mean, I read it that way, so I just.
Yeah, that, it wasn't worded very well, because.
So I don't know.
By that point, we've already done that in December.
Okay.
So just reading it as presented, it looks like school committee receives the presentation, probably discusses it. And then the TBD would be budget and finance discussing the feedback from that school committee meeting. To figure out, okay, what kind of adjustments need to be done. That is my reading of it as presented.
My only hesitation with that is. The, this subcommittee can't decide on what adjustments should be, because that's a full committee decision.
Just speak back then. Just speak back.
So it's not. We just need to talk about it, but, yeah.
You're guiding.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna reword that one, so it's not. More as, okay. All right. So that will stay, but it needs better wording.
We didn't touch the screen.
Okay.
Yay, technology.
I learned that from a child.
Um. Hello. Yeah, we still there. Okay.
Need to get a mouse jiggler out.
So that'll stay there. It'll just get reworded better. Um. Okay.
It's all good.
And there's the annual bu- uh budget hearing and um the school committee approval of the budget. A backup date. The reason there's a backup date is because the committee has to approve the budget, proposed budget by a certain date in order to meet the city charter deadlines um by when, or when we have to provide, this has to be provided to the mayor's office in order for the mayor to be able to provide uh her proposed budget by a certain date and what have you. So um just in case something were to happen and scuttle that planned meeting um for the committee's budget.
You chose her.
We would have a backup, right?
Yeah. Do you, in that March, I'm just generally obviously of the second Wednesday, right, of the month? Didn't know if you moved your regular school committee meeting to the first on that one, to tie it together. No? Standalone?
Sure. So, okay. And then the school committee uh doesn't really have budget actions in the next uh couple of months because uh from that point, it goes into other people's hands, you know, uh the mayor, the city council. And stuff happens at state level and that's all that is laid out in here so that people can see what's happening over there. But um we, that's not what we do. And then, um. And then in June. I mean, this got put in here, but we get budget updates every month anyway. And maybe we should take that out because
That's the regular meeting.
It's part of the regular meeting to have a budget update, generally speaking, and what we were already discussing in terms of a budget update above a
Well, the budget updates you get monthly are for the current year. I think when I'm reading this.
Yeah.
Budget updates are going to propose.
Correct. So I think that's in there because uh the committee may need to discuss.
Any subtractions or additions?
Yes.
But I think that is on full committee rather than subcommittee.
It's under full committee. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So uh depending on what shakes out on the city side or from the state, then um we may need to make adjustments. And at that point in the year, that is when we would make cuts. So I guess that will stay.
I mean, this is a good calendar in the sense that you're ahead of the ballgame. And, and I saw you say in June there, right? Well, I'll tell you, in some bigger cities, oh, they're not doing their final approval until June.
Correct.
Literally, mid-June is what they're voting on their budgets.
Right.
South Island still went on a town meeting on August day, on New Year's, fight for a budget. As a principle, I had to fight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Police cruiser versus reading teacher. We got both, but
Yeah.
It was a good fight.
So those two, I think, are just going to stay there. Um, only it's going to say FY twenty seven budget update and approve any necessary. Okay. And then, and then we're back to now. So we'd be discussing the revising of the next annual budget calendar. And off we go. Um. All right. Cool. Any final thoughts on what's here?
Looks good.
Okay. So the only thing that really then needs to um be done in terms of footwork is getting dates. Certain things. So that means.
We'll do that.
Okay.
You know, all over the calendar, basically, and follow this template here. Is what I probably would guess that this might have been done from Becky or somebody like that.
I do.
Oh, you did know. Oh, I didn't know you were doing it to us to.
I'm sure Becky has much better technological skills because it involves a lot of yeah, me. A little bit of putting that together using Word, because I don't.
Yeah. So if you just look at the school calendar.
So the only thing we don't have on that calendar, but we did do last year was the February meeting, um calling, you know, and inviting the Ways and Means uh Chair to the meeting and the City Council Vice President and is that something that we want to do annually, having that meeting where we invite them and have that collaboration? And if we want to do that annually, is that something we want on the budget calendar? Or just more of a standing, yeah, we know what's going to happen. We just don't know when yet?
I thought of, sorry, go ahead. I think
was that just, it was put on the calendar because I felt like it was put on the calendar because we were struggling. But why not just wait and see? I mean.
Well, I think it's
Can you add to the?
Generally, for more collaboration and to be on the same page sooner, trying to head off uh conflict and misunderstandings.
So my thought of that is um twofold. One, we did do that. Uh, and it was at the request of the chair. And so at the chair's request, I just jumped to City Council's president and, and worked that out, uh that we would do that. And um I think that um that was like one of several different ways I think the committee has made efforts at that kind of increased collaboration or communication. And I don't feel that it worked very well, frankly. Um, like, I don't know that that had any positive impact whatsoever on how things played out.
We leave it in the air and call an audible closer to time. Yeah.
Yeah. And also I think the full committee has kind of um this is something that the full committee is sort of talking about grappling with, trying, you know, will be deciding how to deal with.
But, but we don't need it on this document. Gotcha.
I'm not sure that the full committee would decide that we should do that every, so. Okay.
I think we'll unspeakable such a good job. We're not competing.
And we're going to have so much money that we're not comfortable to talk about.
We're going to print it somewhere.
Yeah, we'll send out our requests.
Send out very private.
All right. So any other um revisions that you think need to go into this?
I think it's beautiful. I love the color coding.
Really do.
All right. And then, um, and then there's just the last page, which is the F A Q.
Yeah, that boy would play the F A Q. I don't think he changed it.
I think we should leave the copy of the budget development policy in there because it's just a pain in the butt for people to have to go.
And click through everything.
Navigate to the policy manual, look through the thing to find the right, oh, it's just, I think we should just keep that. Put the copy in there. Uh, but it does link directly to the policy manual if people really want to dig into the fiscal management section, you know?
Yeah. The F A Q is fine because I have not had other questions on the budget calendar development timeline asked me that are not answered.
That are not answered there. Okay. All right. Um, so this part is good as it is then.
Hmm.
All right. Cool. Um, we're not voting on anything today because we're just going to um
Refresh.
Revise this and come back and give it our
Better tweaks. We'll update the next month for the dates, new pictures and.
Okay. So um I just have one question in terms of follow-up from this. Um. I'm happy to do it in terms of actually um making the new document with dates supplied from the superintendent and what have you, but I'm not going to, my term ends in December. So I'm just wondering if someone else would like to try their hand at doing that? It's not me because I will not hear it.
Yeah, I think either of us would be having.
The more.
I'm more techie, so I'll have to do it.
I think techie is definitely a good quality to have when
We're messing cakes.
Revising.
Pretty.
Okay. I will send you the original. I apologize that it is a Word doc. Okay.
That is fine.
A terrible way of bringing a document.
I like what so many different.
You can do a hard word. Set. Okay. I'm sure you will do it much better and with less frustration. Okay, cool. All right. Any further discussion about that? All right, cool. So next and last thing is our review and discussion of rubrics for annual budget documents.
Okay.
This is sound.
Okay.
So I just want to give the little preamble and then we can dive it. Um, so we have discussed, the committee at large has discussed quite a bit, the need to improve the um annual budget information that is present. Well, we need to improve our, our budget information generally, but specifically the annual um budget proposal that's provided. Um, and we briefly discussed um coming back to this at our last meeting because I had attended a workshop through MASC um about the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award. And so I wanted to talk about that. And then um, that's not necessarily the only rubric you could go by um either. So uh I thought we should just talk about what all the potential options are and um yeah, that's, that's the gist. Okay. So.
So I want to thank you, you know, just for sending all that because it was good reading, all the different models. Um. So, you know, and I just kept going with that, looking at different things. And so I tried to send it to you, but my printer and Long Meadows site, um so I looked at a Long Meadow one because it was more our size, because a lot of the ones that seem to win awards had really large districts. Uh, which meant they probably had one person who was just probably devoted to that because they had the money to do that. And because we're small, um so, and I kind of like Long Meadows because it's sort of the top part is what we currently do, which they can talk, can call the control master. And then underneath is the detail. And I think we have the detail, but we've never added it to our budget. So it actually lists each school like it doesn't put a teacher's name, but it actually says like, I'm just going to pass this around so you can see it. If you look at one school, you'll see you really know when you read that what it costs like for the electricity or the heat. Um, and I think as a taxpayer, I mean, we all know, um you're going to be able to just the third highest in the great state of Massachusetts tax-wise. And people really kind of want to know that, you know, even the schools are suffering from ever-source bills and um, you know, the phone bill in one of those schools is really high. So, you know, as a taxpayer, you know, or even as a school committee member, I would ask him, why is the telephone bill so big in this one school? I mean, you kind of see all of it. Um, and I think we have that. We've just never, we've sort of presented to the, the top part, which is called the control master. Um, so this is an old Long Meadow one that just really kind of gave the detail, which I think we want to look at. Even as a school committee member, I'd like to see that detail. I mean, we're facing some hard decisions with declining enrollments and um, underperforming and trying to get our schools performing and trying to bring parents back. Um, and so it's, it's a time to ask and look at these things. I think the detail there as a taxpayer makes me happy. Um, I know, you know, that, you know, when I pay my taxes, more than half of it goes to the schools. So and it's August first, I'm going to go write a huge check. And it makes me happy, but I also need to know that that money's being used. You know, so that format made me happy as a reader and it just, um.
Can I?
Sure.
Can I ask? So that I understand, um because to me, this looks a lot like what we already.
But you see, the front half does. The front half does, but we don't get the detail of the.
So is it this like high school teacher, English, teacher, math, teacher, music, that you, that comes to you?
And Andy produces a, a format that is by the state where it's all clumped together. And that pulls it apart. So it's all clumped together in that first part that Long Meadow has, which is probably what they send to the state.
Well, Andy agreed.
So I think it's the detail we're always missing. So, you know, I wanted to know how many first grade teachers we, we had. Um, and I couldn't figure that out. Um, so because it's just all clumped together.
Well, I think the clumping is, there, there's a question of audience of who is this for? Because if you were doing a budget just for me, you would put it in Excel and I would be happy as clam, whereas other people um definitely, if they just see a spreadsheet, they're, they don't want it and they need that narrative. Like, I think that the cover sheets that we've been getting for our monthly meetings have been really helpful. Uh, just, you know, in terms of presentation. And it's like on one hand, you don't want to be too redundant, but on the other hand, in some places redundancy really can clarify. Like if we, we, if you go through the budget, you can count up and figure out the FTEs, but I have something I could ask, getting the FTE from a building by building basis just.
That's, okay. So we're used to looking at that. So I, I actually showed that to somebody who has nothing to do with the schools. And I said, gee, can you understand this? And I was like, I'm kind of that, I think that's what we need sort of in Greenfield is people are asking.
Waymen to be able to know.
I'm sorry. I am the angry taxpayer. I want to know what I'm paying for. Um, there's been a lot of stuff that has gone on in Greenfield. We've done a lot of construction. We have a lot of bills, but we want to know what we're paying for. There is a group that is all about transparency. And I'm, I'm with that because it feels like we just get more taxes and you know, the number one thing I want my tax money paid for is good schools. And I think that's true for a lot of taxpayers. So transparency, and to me, that gave transparency. You know, I've never seen like the heating bills and the water bills and the, and I think that's sort of this shows like how many teachers are getting longevity in each school. So you kind of know like, oh, there's older teachers here that have been here for a while. I mean, if we saw that all of our schools don't have longevity because nobody's staying, I mean, it gives you some
Going back
Detail.
The heated stuff like that and the electric that.
Yeah.
That, because we, we can tell people that yes, we have older buildings and older buildings have higher maintenance. But if we have something hard to point to, they might accept it more.
That specific example of those are all teed by the city.
Right.
So I, we don't present.
But we could get that. I mean.
Oh, um, when, what they provide to me isn't broken out by school.
Okay. We can ask for that. I mean, that's just one example, but it's I always say it's taxpayer-friendly or?
Well, I know because one of the things that kind of bit us this last year was uh the way that over in the superintendent's office, various people were lumped together as central services when really it was because of their office location being there, which made it look like we had this massive office of paper pushers when these people had the office there, but were actually this will, this will, this will never.
Right. I know what you're saying. Yeah.
They're probably district-wide personnel.
Exactly.
That, that keeps being, I mean, it's been remodeled in our budget so many different times, like one year, all the district-wide people, including all the nurses and all the ELL teachers, and it, and then they got broke.
I wouldn't think of them then.
Right.
But I see what you're saying. Right.
It, then it shifted into a different model. So it's been really kind of confusing as somebody who reads budgets.
Um, well, and then when you change the model from one year to the next, it means the spreadsheet won't read cleanly and.
No, I did go back historically because I elevated the instructional reader and instructional.
Yeah.
I went back through it, moved them all into one. So that comparative data was there and able to be done. So.
So like all the ELL teachers and the, the special I got put back in?
Uh, well, ELL was its own cost center. So that was, we just let that. You know, because we had, I mean, if you remember like I'm thinking. You know, because we had, I mean, if you remember like specifically, there was a math and science academy.
Yeah.
They got moved to the middle.
So we moved, that's just consolidated those into, because we get cited every year from auditors about our chart of accounts being aligned with the state. So that was our attempt. So if you remember when I did that, a workshop for the full school committee and the budget development, I walked through and talked about the fact that we have to consolidate these lines, so it's what we did.
Right, but the state isn't our tax payer switches. And I totally agree. I know you have to do that for the state, but then there, it's almost like you have different audiences. I mean, because at this point, I don't, the state is like, how do I say it? Um, shoving local control down our throats. Um, and I think what you do for the state, you have to do for the state, but we also need to consider the fact that the taxpayers are a little tired of paying the taxes they're paying. I mean, because it may get down to the point where, you know, if we had to go out and get a vote to for the school budget, taxpayers right now, I mean, just the fact that our water bills went up and our sewer bills went up is caused. Um, and that, again, the state says we have to do that because of an audit.
That's.
You know?
I think it's a, I don't know, it's a little hard to have a crystal ball about how things would play out in a referendum. My personal thought is that the school budget would pass hands down in a referendum in Greenfield every time because Greenfield supports education and we have monuments to that in our building. So, um, I, I sort of don't. These spreadsheets could be laid out however, like I don't have a, personally, I don't have a force in that race, sort of, I don't care. Um, my, what I would like to see is something that's more accessible than spreadsheet uh, information and um, that goes to.
But Rosalie had a good beginning, but then it went to spreadsheets.
Well, I mean, you have to have spreadsheets. I'm not saying they shouldn't exist or we shouldn't present them.
I just think. I know back before I was on this committee, um, I had some friends and the way that I would help them with it is I would just use either Microsoft Word or Excel and take the raw data to make it into a pie chart. I mean, and that was all it took for, because there are some people that'll see the numbers, their eyes would lay over, but if it's in a more graphic representation, they'll get it.
Well, it kind of goes to the um the MBA rubric, so. Okay, so. I'm not saying that we have to do this. I just want to look at the rubric for the, the ASBO, which is Association of School Business Officials. Uh, for folks who don't know, meritorious budget. Okay, um, this, they, this lays out a whole um organized set of criteria by which a school committee can improve their budget. Okay. Um, and it's spelled out in this nice um kind of delineated checklist. And um, the reason that I included the sample budget books and things like that that were included or because those are ones that have won this award.
Right.
So, and there, it's not easy to do this. This is, this would be, say the committee decided it wanted to chase after this award, which I think would be lovely because that would probably be confidence inspiring um in our budget. Uh, this would be a multi-year project to achieve. But any attempt you make to um hit some of these.
Categories.
Yes, I think would produce a substantive improvement. And one of the, I think one of the main ideas um in the MBA is that you present information in multiple ways because people perceive and understand information in multiple ways. Um, it's not wholly unlike differentiating instruction in the classroom, right? So, um, I would like to see things that are laid out. Um, Andy sent this, um, this is self badly. Um, they include a lot of graphics where um, you, if you, if this looks overwhelming to you on a whole page, you can look at this and a lot of people will go, aha, okay, now I am seeing exactly how much of the school budget is going into administration and it's this little silver. And then this is how much is going into instruction and that's what, where I want my dollars to go, right? That's what most people would probably say. Um, and uh, they could probably clarify student services, I think, because not everyone knows what that means. Uh, but I just.
Yes, that's a student massage and room service.
Right? So I just think it's helpful to provide a multi um sort of format presentation of information, if that makes sense.
I agree. It is technically redundant, but it's redundant in a way that makes it accessible to multiple audiences. Because I know the city council, some members on it, they complain year after year about our budget book. I think we might need to just point blank ask, okay, what are you not seeing that you need to see?
I think we've done that and haven't really gotten a clear answer. I think when someone is confused, sometimes they don't really know what it is that they're looking for. They just know what's in front of them isn't working for them. So they're just there somewhere. Um, so I kind of want to, all right, how would you summarize the ideas we just talked about?
We're looking at the format, design of our budget.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things. One of them is how line items are laid out and the overall summary is spreadsheet.
I think what Mel was asking for was a deeper breakdown.
Correct.
Um, so.
The content.
So Mel was asking for uh, more trees while you were asking for the forest.
With pictures.
You just did everything, Andy. After magic wand, working these things. Sorry. Okay, uh, so we're doing a lot of talking, but we are not the people who create these documents and I really want to know.
If we can't give orders that can't be followed, that's madness.
So could you share what you did the month ago?
Maybe.
Yeah, it was, wasn't it, it was a small town, but it was a half size.
Okay.
So it's not like you're being filmed.
Okay.
In that sense, but similar head calendars and we met throughout the winter. I was just, I would say just January, June there. And it was more, more spreadsheet type based in that scenario, but we did lay things out like you've seen, like, okay, we're cutting this teacher, like, I think.
Okay.
Long Meadow, right? Minus this, minus that or, okay, you want us to pay more attention to the music part? Okay, give and take there. That takes there. So it was, it was more mathematical.
Okay.
I would say they were dealing with smaller numbers.
So.
And we did, we did do the charts. When I say charts, not, sorry.
No, what?
Not, not pie charts, but um more charts for each individual school. So that would lay out, okay, here's how many with attendance in there too. So, okay, um, you know, Corey Hill has, you know, this grade, this grade, this grade or here we go. And there's three first grades, here's the average size is 21 or something like that. Okay, if you want us, if we have to go down to two.
Right.
Right now, instead of like three at 60 or 63, now you're going to have two jointly at 30, which you almost can't have, right, to the 31.
I really like that.
You do. That's what that is.
Focus, okay, not who is being served.
Exactly.
I really like that.
Yeah.
And that helped us decide on other things like school choice as well too, who to accept for, when I say not, not the individuals, I'm sorry, not who to accept, but how many to offer, how many seats to offer for school choice, which um, we just had some applicant, an application that was looking at our school choice seats here. It's very limiting.
Wow, it's kind of crazy that our enrollment is down and yet we're very limited on these choice seats available.
Very.
Why?
I'm going to, I propose with, if you put it on our next meeting for August to discuss with you, if I could have some leeway into see if there are spots in accepting others. Because you are already an accepting committee in city. So we can make tweaks to where if we have seats as well too, but literally I think eight spots, nine spots is.
Which doesn't make sense if we're constantly talking about our enrollment being.
Yeah, and I, I don't know the background, so I'm going to do that, but I, that just hit my desk literally Thursday. Thinking, wait a minute, you can't, we're only taking this many, but we send out this many and if we want to draw in from other places, you know, I would imagine at times we have seats.
An excellent idea for the August.
So I did pencil that in on the agenda for the whole group. Sorry to.
No, that's great, sorry. Well, it was all this money, all the money, so.
So, so the, the, I apologize, one more. We will get you that because I, I would see that as kind of standard.
Okay.
We are small enough of our schools to show you, um, here's what we got to have for teachers, here's our breakdown at this school and here's what our enrollment looks like, right? It's always a guess. You're pretty good when you get to the upper grade, well, after kindergarten, I say you're pretty good. Kindergarten, you don't know who's going to walk in the door. I'm sure we'll get a handful through the next month of August as well too. But after that, you kind of know who's going, who's coming and then we're the registrar here for the town census, that type of scenario. You start doing that for enrollment projections for kindergarten as well.
I think in the past, we've typically had an enrollment update in October. Superman.
Yes, yeah. And that's when the state, so it'd be. Yeah, we'll give you that, but this would be when you're prepping the budget to say, okay, hey, hey, we had three teachers last year in this grade, uh, in first grade, but the numbers are down, so we're going to drop to two, but that group of three is going to grow up to the next grade and you're going to have to move that teacher up there.
We used to do multi-grade because of the numbers. So like you might have a two, three or one, two based on odd numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. So my question is if there is this deeper breakdown on a spreadsheet document like this, does that necessitate creating two different documents in order to have one that aligns with state requirements and one that is providing this?
It, it seems like there are two different ends. One ends wants to be very deep in the weeds, but then the other, like, you'll hear people in town say that they want the school budget to focus on the kids and not administration this, that. And if you were to page through the long budget and add up numbers, you'll see how much is actually going to the kids and to people who are directly in contact with them. But a lot of times people, they don't have enough time to go through the whole thing. And so if we had, you know, just a shorter thing, we could point directly to like that pie chart, I think that could be helpful. But it's, you know, it's two different ends and I think.
The detail is what creates the overarching, you know? I mean, it's just, um, I mean, that is something I even thought about. You know, it's the detail part principals live that. I mean, and that's sort of a piece of it. I mean, I don't know. I mean, you have to have the pieces to get the total one.
So, because, because we do not deal with the state auditors or any of that stuff. I, my question is for the business manager.
Personnel is something that's different because that's, you know, as far as from what I have to report to the state, I actually don't work for personnel. That is through uh, the, the power school registrar or maybe even the, just have Becky or her other stuff, but everything is explored, like from UNICEF, I can export it all into Excel and manipulate it. So, you know, to do summary, like taking that lineup of budget that we have, you know, that, you know, it is broken out by cost. So, you know, I know it's a lot of numbers there, but you can actually, what is, what is our green, what has been historically spent at Greenfield school? It is presented there. What is historically spent at each of the schools is presented there, district wide presented there, transportation is presented there. So the cost center detail is there, then just summarize it to some, whether or not, you know, do we have a discussion or do you let us take a stab at it to see, you know, is this level of summary? I've seen Long Meadows, uh, you know, we, Long Meadow is not different than what it is actually that we do do.
Right.
You know, the FTEs as far as personnel goes, this was admittedly, you know, Karen embedded those in her PowerPoint, so we have that information, you know? So it's a matter of, you know, I mean, I even offered, um, you know, that Excel spreadsheet that I can add an FTE column there and we can just put an FTE there and stuff like that. And she wanted to do it through the PowerPoint. It still gave the same information because then we also have the costs associated on each of those PowerPoint slides. So it's there, then as far as putting together a document, you know, it, it could get too busy, but there's nothing saying that we can't have a separate sheet to say that there are 12 regular teachers at Newton School. And then another sheet of that breakdown of each of the schools to say, three of them are first graders, you know, so on and so forth.
I wasn't sure if that was one of yours, so I doubted it, but I mean, yeah.
So it's movable, I guess is what I'm saying. It's just a matter of the, we, we get into, I want to say the, how, I don't think we and I'm just speaking for me, for my doing it from our other ways, like, are we going to end up, you know, analyzing this and, and, you know, well, I want to present it this way, I want to present that, and then we're going, we're going to lose sight of what it is that we're trying to do, you know? So it's like, we could end up debating this to death as to what it, what is it that we feel Joe and Jane Q public out there is going to be happy with. As we learned, well, last, sometimes it's, nobody's ever going to be happy with how it is, we've answered so many questions. And it's still, nobody was happy, you know? So it's like one of those things where, where, when is, though we're going to do the, from the school can, it's going to be the line in the sand as far as where we're comfortable, we feel that the information that we are presenting, Joe and Jane Q public out there can feel comfortable and understand. I mean, let's speak wrong, but we'd be more than willing to sit down, we've done it with city councillors in the past where you go, want to talk, let's talk about it. You know, when the mayor was running through, I sat down there and Christine said, look, we'll go through the lineup, I can tell you what it is that these pumpkin codes and so on and so forth. So the manipulating of the data is not a challenge, it's just a matter of, I don't want to say over manipulating, but it's like, when does it get to a point where we are comfortable with what it is that we're presenting and we're going forward? So then we can fine tune that information, you know, to make it even.
Well, maybe it's not even a budget need or it might be a website need. I mean, because one of the things that isn't on our website and part of it is because our staff changes so much. Like I remember having four third grade teachers in one year, okay? And that it doesn't have like by school, like, you know, there's five first grade teachers. There's no description of what's in the school. I mean, part of what I'm saying is there's just this bottom line number out there and nobody can put like, how many first grade teachers, how many second grade teachers? What are we talking about? It's just, it comes out as, and that's why I liked Long Meadows, because it really does, I mean, people think, oh, it's the schools, but the schools have rising heat costs, the schools have rising telephone cost. I mean, it really kind of, to me was like, yes, my bills are going up and so are, you know, when I read it, I'm like, yeah, but, you know, just make it as simple as possible.
So I guess, so we, we, we received them. We know how many teachers there are at different levels. That was given to us. We've heard about um, class sizes and how they would be affected by having, you know, different numbers of staff. And we, like, we receive that information and what the, I think most people don't watch committee meetings.
Nope.
At that time.
So website, maybe?
I'm, I am all for creating a budget website, um, but I don't want to fight, this feels like already a lot to you. It's just. It's just improving the annual budget.
Okay.
So I kind of want to, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't at all want to shut down a discussion about creating like a new webpage.
No, I'm just, no, I'm not even thinking of a new webpage. I'm just thinking of putting it on our, the Greenfield Public Schools K-12. You know, I mean, it's not there.
So I think what I'm hearing is we already have a lot of the details. We just need a secondary document that is more visually accessible. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, not just more visually accessible, but yes, I think that is a cheap one.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, to manipulate the information is, isn't that, no, it's, it's doable.
So. Okay, so we basically talked about two main things. Providing deeper spreadsheet breakdown and providing multi-format information specifically in visuals.
Perfect.
I think those are two good goals. And I think we should definitely talk more in detail about that, but I want to wrap up for today because it's almost noon. And I would think we should have some time to kind of percolate on that. What I would like to ask folks to do is to, before we meet the next time, sit with this profile and consider the, what's laid out here because this would be, I think we would be talking about creating more of a budget book. As an annual budget document and that's
A bigger, like a larger.
First year than. Yeah. And I like the way that this rubric lays things out because it has the same the same breakdown that you can see is used in the examples that are in the folder for what an executive summary would look like, what an organizational section would look like, what the financial section would look like, et cetera. And, but that's a lot of time and I think that-
And it's also a heavy lift to put on an interim.
It's, well, we're not in an ideal position, frankly, to be developing. Developing a budget book, yes, because because there's some blocks. Because we have an interim superintendent who is wonderful, but will just be with us here. And also, the committee had attempted to attract a staff business manager and wasn't able to do that. I think that the public statements and vitriol that occurred in various meetings over the course of this spring certainly contributed to having multiple applicants withdraw. Nobody wants to stake their career on that. And we need to do a much better job as a community on that. You know, not self-blaming about that, but I think I would just implore everyone to please do their level best to elevate their discussions about the school budget so that we can be successful in things like that. So, so, right, so it's not an ideal situation to be trying to do this.
Especially related to that, something that I would hope for our August meeting as part of the subcommittee report, that we could ask them that if there's information that they are looking to see in the budget, send an email so we have that for our next discussion about it.
Yeah.
So that it's not just five people, what we think people want.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's in, send an email so we can do this rather than open session discussion on it before we have ramifications.
Well, just to be clear about the, we can ask for this in terms of the school committee agenda so that people can discuss their suggestions in open meeting. But there are other members of the school committee can't be discussing by email this topic.
Oh, I wasn't saying discussing. I was more of saying like, say, someone really wanted a pie chart of, you know, admin teachers, they'd send an email saying, hey, this is what I'm looking for. Would that count as discussing if it's literally just giving one piece of information with no response?
I mean, I do not enforce open meeting law. It's not my job, but I think it does.
You can help me? Yeah, it's a suggestion over email.
I don't know.
But that's the purpose of having.
It's like a phone call to find out.
The agenda materials, you know, in advance of meetings, because the expectations that committee members are gonna come prepared with what they want to say.
Okay. And we can, sometimes the agenda comes out so close to meeting time that it's hard to.
That's true. That's true. But this is a long project, so it's not like people will have to have, everything they ever want to suggest ready for that. They can, they can, we can come back to it at a future meeting and discuss it.
To your point, what we're trying to do is get it generated out on Friday before the meeting.
That's really helpful.
And limit, almost want to say won't, but I don't want to say no, limit the amount of things that are added on after that point.
Right, because I always got caught because I would read the first one and then another one would come out. And then I'd be like, oh, I missed something.
Okay. So I, let me see.
So maybe just,
in terms of, so homework is sitting with the MBA checklist and just spending some time considering the different elements, what you think of it. And that way we'll be able to have a little more nitty gritty discussion when we come back. And that involves also, you know, going through these other sample budget books and things like that and considering what appeals, what you think is effective and advisable. And I just, it would be super helpful if folks are able to be specific about that. So I am sorry for, for leaving homework tasks in between meetings, but I think that would be okay. Any other discussion for now? Do folks have other major points that think, you think should be added to the two that we already said? Which are the deeper spreadsheets and the multi-format presentation? Okay, and do folks have other rubrics or other criteria examples, things like that, that they would like to suggest going on?
I think right now we've just got so many different formats, run at us that we have to see what will work best.
Yeah, well, that's the trouble when you're looking at multiple different schools' documents, because everybody's done things differently. Each one of these documents is so long, it's really overwhelming. And that's kind of why I like the idea of going by a rubric. Because a rubric sets your goals for you. Okay, did like, want to establish this.
Even if it's just a key, how to read at the beginning of the document, that could help.
Well, I also don't think it's our document. It's the superintendent's document. And so I just think part of what we're saying is bringing our concerns about the look of it for, for citizens to read is important. I mean, the readability of it. And, you know, we're just advising him like that. So I don't want us to, again, put too much on an interim superintendent. This is a multi-year process. But I think it's just a case of making it a better process than we had in the past.
Okay.
A better document. And it's always gonna get better every year.
Hopefully. Yeah. All right, all right. Thank you, everyone. 12:05, so quits for now. All right. So I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
And we'll call a vote. Let's see. All in favor?
Aye.